Well, if there's any further discussion or anything.
All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Ashland County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, October twenty fourth. Like to call the meeting to order, and if you please join me on invocation, have a prayer for elected leadership. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits. Who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people. Listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures, welcoming those seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm not sure if you're gonna have.
Okay, public comment. There's a lot of people on there, but is there a public comment? Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Approval of minutes.
Make a motion to accept it written.
What second?
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those in favors say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Rebus?
Um, I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
Okay, I attended the uh ACCHS uh. Uh, foundation meeting uh they had at the gymnasium had Bill Snyder.
You were there? I didn't see you.
Yeah, I didn't, I knew you said you were going, but I didn't see you there, but uh it was very well attended. I think it's a. A tribute to how you can get things done without maybe going down the typical uh. Just get a bond and and do it. This has done a lot of private fundraising and grants and things, and I think they've done a very good job. Uh, and it's gonna continue with the next phase will be the auditorium work and things in the school, so I I think it's a uh. A very worthwhile undertaking that they've done, so I think they've done a good job.
Yeah, um, I I would echo that. The community came together and that facility is outstanding. Um, it was, it was really great to attend and Bill Snyder had a wonderful uh. Wonderful speech. Um, so kudos to everybody involved on that board and all the contractors that made it happen. Um, the only other thing I just wanted to to bring up was um. Last week, um, Monday night Walnut Township had a meeting and I was um brought up as an example. Um, of serving and um conflict when my father would bid jobs, um, how I abstained. I just wanted to make aware that I sent the statute to Mr. Henderson and he um gave me thorough feedback that were good. Um, I've done everything correct. I'm abstaining based on KSA seventy-five dash forty-three oh four. And I fill out the statement of sub substantial interest um with the county clerk, so just wanted to acknowledge that. Um, since I was brought up to let everyone know that I strive to do everything. Correct all the time um and and lead by example, so I just wanted to to clear that for me. Um, new business, Mark Zeltman, Finance Director Audit RFP Recommendation.
Good. So, good morning. As you are aware, we have the three. Um, I sent you guys an email ranking them in in my opinion. Um, based on. A lot of things, cost, um, references, um. Just hearing and speaking with other. Government bodies that have used these audit firms, um, what they had to say about them and like I said, I ranked them and so I think. I would say Barney and Associates would be number one. That's who we should go with. Um, I talked to Michelle yesterday. And, you know, we didn't really necessarily have. An issue with Gordon CPA at all. Um, their prices going up, which is a factor, uh, but. Um, I don't think it's a bad idea to change your audit firm from time to time. Um, if we go one way and we wanna go back, we definitely can if they put in an RFP when we do one. Or if they put in a proposal when we do an RFP, um, I just think that I don't think anybody's feelings would be hurt going with a different perm. It's just. Choosing somebody different is always a good thing sometimes, so. I don't have anything to say.
I would echo what he has said. Um, Mark's put a lot of work into this as far as any references and such, and I've spoken to people from Barney. And Associates at different conferences, or conferences that I have attended, and they're always. Very open with questions, answers, I mean, they, they're very approachable. And I think they would serve us well.
They do have, we will probably have a. A single audit in twenty twenty-four based on expensing. Over the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar threshold of federal dollars, which would be the part of money. I expect we will probably spend over that next year. Um, with the plans that have been foreseen, I think that will happen. So with that, I know the Barney and Associates single audit price is higher. Um, so if you wanna take that into consideration, I understand, um, it's a lot higher than the other ones, but. I liked the all-inclusive price that they had offered. Um, for one flat fee, you know what that's gonna be unless you have a single audit. Um, we can call them, anybody can call them as much as they want, talk to them, ask questions. Um, any, whenever they come here, that travel's included. We don't pay for meals. Uh, more mileage or any of that hotel stays if they happen to be here for a week or whatever the timeframe is. It's nice to note that that all that's included in that price, so we're not getting an invoice for this or this or.
Okay. All right, I would look for a motion to approve Barney and Associates based on recommendation from the Finance Director and County Clerk. I have a motion to approve.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Second with discussion.
Okay.
Um, was the treasurer to put any?
She had indicated to me yesterday that she thought the decision was solely yours.
Oh, okay. Yeah, what's the term on that, the number of years?
Four, four, yeah, this would be audit.
Three in my head.
Twenty-three through twenty-six.
Okay.
So each of those years.
Okay, good. So it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised and and happy with them because I think they'll they'll. Come to your meetings and discuss things, um, they'll help us.
Awesome.
Probably everything needs.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so um I make a motion to approve the EMS Commissioner Report for September twenty twenty-three. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Oh, sorry.
Well, just just to clarify, Mark. So. Um. We're gonna need to have Ben uh, our agreement letter with them, and I think the. The timeline said that that would be next week, so are you going to reach out to them about that or going to do that?
I can.
So, that was it, so.
Okay.
And did we send something to Gordon CPA? I mean, since they, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, actually, both of the other applicants.
Both.
Yeah, that would be great. We started doing that in in Roden Bridge that we just let people know, you know, thank you for submitting, but we chose someone else.
Appreciate your submission and 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 with our former, with Gordon, you know, we did like working with you, but you know, recommend. Recommendation that we change every so often.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. All right, Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Uh. Last week, Eric and I got an email from Betty and Gunther Fisher. And she had called, I returned her call about property being landlocked. There by Rollins Road where the bridge is uh. We've had the bridge closed for some time. Her concern or their concern is they used to go through where the low water crossing is. And those property owners uh won't let them cross through there anymore. So their tenant has to come through uh another property that he farms for someone else to get to theirs. And they wanna know what happens if that change changes hands and how they're supposed to get to their property. So, I believe I sent everybody maps that showed their property. And their, that's what their concern is. What happens if if the other property changes hands or tenants change and they can't get through? So I told her that I would bring this to the commission, and that's, that's their concern.
Uh, earlier we had had a discussion, discussion on another matter, and Pat had said something about. That the county doesn't have to provide access to every piece of property, and I don't know if it really fits this scenario.
This does a little, yeah, it does a little bit. Um, they weren't using that bridge that's been closed for access. Their, their property, and they couldn't have because that bridge is twelve foot wide or whatever.
For several, for several years, they have not.
And and the letter admits that, but I I think what her concern is there that. Because they're friends or friendly with whoever they're crossing. The property now, but they they've gotten by with that, but then if the property changes and they no longer have. Can they be uh put on an island, basically, by?
And their question was about us possibly putting in a low water crossing.
We only serve the one farm?
No, there's, there's another one that goes around, but he's still, he's still allowed to go through the crossing right now. Uh, but that's how he hauls his grain in and out, in and out also.
If there's one low water crossing, will that satisfy both of them? Can they both have access?
Yes, cuz if if we put one in, it would be where the bridge is now, where the road is.
Yeah.
So it would satisfy.
Okay.
Whoever needed to get, get back there. Now, I I took the liberty of looking back. The original low water crossing in two thousand eighteen was two hundred.
Proposal.
Proposal. Was two hundred and fifty, forty-eight thousand dollars. That was with four six-foot pipes through it. I contacted CFS, the people who had done that before, and talked to him, and that was basically making it road. With everything. You know, like you would put on a normal ru- uh road instead of one that just goes back into.
Like an access.
Yes, to an access. And I contacted him and asked him about what if we, what could we do to make it to where it would be more economical? For this to get through, and he said, well, he, he could uh do another study, but with uh. Department of Water Resources and the Corps, there's certain things that have to happen. And he was, if we chose, he could go back and redo it. With thirty-six inch tubes possibly instead of seventy-two, but that would be an expense of ten thousand dollars just to have that done.
Just the study.
Just the study, yes, make it to where it's just so they can get back and forth to do their.
Yeah, well, it'd be a narrower road and.
Probably lower.
Profiles with smaller pipes, with fifty-six pipes or would it?
Well, if that's something that they have to do, I can't, I can't answer what it would be, but that's, that's where I I went with it. Uh, I don't know that it would be our place to ask one landowner to grant easement for another landowner. I don't think, you know, to use that other low water crossing that's on the other property owner, and that's why I I went this way.
I have some questions. Um, Rollins Road's a township road.
Yes.
Uh, based on the area, when I pull it up, it appears that the road hasn't been maintained to the south of that. Um, in the conversations we've had, staying consistent with conversations, if the road's not maintained. Then it's landowners to bring it up to par before the township will maintain it. I'm just asking these questions because I wanna help everyone if it's feasible. And if we go to measures of fixing a a crop, a crossing for this creek. This is a long stretch of grown road not maintained.
Is it to the north or to the south?
That's to the north.
No, that's to the south. So, so the, the folks that we're talking about with with the concern, if you look, there's like the easement comes through here that they own to the tip of this. So, there's two problems, right? The road is more of the issue to me. I like, if we correct the way to get over the creek.
Then I think the township would, would probably.
Maintain it.
Maintain it.
As a dirt road.
As, as their road, but right now, and I haven't talked to them, but I'm guessing.
Because to me.
That they can't, the only way they could get around there, only way they can get around there would have to go through that crossing.
Okay.
And being the road's been closed, there, there hasn't been any maintenance.
And so then if it gets up to that, then it it's actually affecting four, four. Different people when you get to the end, the south end of Rollins Road, then you can have access to four different areas.
The thing that I saw interesting in that map, and they didn't need to contact them again. Is it looks like they had an easement or they had property that. Went from their forty acres in the middle clear to that road.
Yep.
So at some point in time, they had done their homework.
Yes.
To make sure they could get to their property.
Get to their township, correct?
Yes.
And then since then.
Yeah, do you see that? That's their easement over to their, to their farm. Um. Okay, so staying consistent, like, I know when we had talked about it, we were mentioning. When Mr. Brooks again and asked. I've been thinking, overthinking this for a while because I feel like we need to have criteria, cuz at the end of the day, like I said, we wanna help everybody. It's just not possible when it comes to funding. Mister, and I'm I'm comparing the two cuz these are the only two that we've, I've had since we've been here of. Mr. Brooks's wasn't a failed structure.
Correct.
So to me of how many people does it affect? Is it a failed structure? Like, all of these need to be part of the rating thought of like how we make them priority. Um. In my opinion, but I'm just, I I wanna have a discussion about it because a failed structure goes above a not failed structure, like. Every structure in Ashland County isn't built for today's farm equipment, right? Like, everything's.
We've got on major roads, we've got really narrow bridges that farmers have to go around.
Right.
They're not, it's not on a plan to replace them because it's not a failed structure.
It's just too small.
Yeah, it's just too small, so that's just a totally different standard.
You had a great idea when we were brainstorming of when these situations come up, because we're always like, okay. If we help these folks, then if we have thirteen other people that show up next week with the same problem, cuz we know it's out there. Our county has these issues. How do you say yes to this one and not to this one? And when, when it's funding, that's a problem. So Joe had the eye, the thought of, well. What happens if we do them case by case? Cuz every scenario is different. This comes before us. We do our due diligence to figure out the cost, and then we budget it for the next year. Cuz most people, they're good if if they have a plan or know you have a plan for them, right? It doesn't have to be done next week.
And it may not be next year. It may take two or three years to be able to come up with the.
But at least.
The funds, but I don't know. I've just been, I've been sitting here trying to figure out, and like Pat says, you know, each case is gonna be different.
Mm-hmm.
And no one here wants to shut someone off from their property or cause them grief to get there.
Yeah.
But we can't afford to fix everything.
Well, especially if you find access, maybe you can find access off the neighboring road, you mean, as much as possible, so.
This one, this one here, this one here is.
Right, it's locked.
Yeah, it's locked, so.
And, and what's kind of also unique about it is it's really been inaccessible for farm equipment or anything.
Forty years.
Yeah.
Forty or fifty years, because a six-row planner, when the, a four-row planner, I don't think would even go down the bridge.
And so the the weight, the size, everything is, and it's been. Status quo and working without really any complaints. It's only from. From now on, if things, uh, if things change and the land changes, then they are definitely gonna be locked in and without a way in. So, I mean, if we can get. A less costly option, I'm I'm definitely would like to look at it.
Well, and then, and the other thing that we need to make sure is, uh, cuz we've had this in the county. If we put a low water crossing in for agriculture uses. It doesn't necessarily, if somebody wants to build a home back there, then. Not having them expect us to upgrade.
Correct.
To an actual bridge because we have that on Clay Road west of Effingham where someone built a house in between two low water crossings. And then they came to us concerned, we need to put a bridge in because when it's raining, emergency services can't get to us. We can't get home or we can't get out, and that's something we've discussed in the past. You know, this needs to be decided before we get to that point. Because to put a bridge in for one or two houses, you know, and you're spending a million dollars, and it's, it's not uh. It doesn't qualify for any of the grants would be really hard to do, and I'm not trying to keep anybody from building a house. I'm just saying.
Yeah. What is the, so your estimate there, that's saying to remove the old bridge?
No.
It's not, right?
No.
So there'd be.
Yes, what was the estimate?
So the first one. Was uh, back in two thousand eighteen was two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Well, it does, it does say removal of existing structure right here.
Oh, I'll be darned.
But that was twelve thousand dollars back then.
It's still, it was included, so it gives, okay, wow.
But that'd be at least a hundred thousand, if not more than what that, that is the current price, if we, if we bid the same.
Yes, yes, if we, if we bid the same, but.
Why was that one?
Uh, I'd have to get the plans. It was at least twenty-four feet wide.
So there's planes, everything, so they should be able to update pretty easy for us.
Well, they just, the biggest.
Modern.
Have to measure the width of a combine. With the duels, with the duels. I mean, I could say going twenty-four feet wide, just not six feet off the ground and.
Right.
And uh, you know, maybe there's a way that we can work with with each other and and make the approaches different.
I think we'd have to have a minimum of twenty feet.
At least, I would, I still think twenty-four probably.
That would probably.
Be safe, safe.
Well. I don't know if it's possible, maybe twenty on uh this type of agriculture or ex-structure. If it was on a more ma- more major road, I would say twenty-four.
So our bridges are twenty-six feet, what we're putting in. Twenty-six to twenty-eight.
Cuz I know when I got on the first, first bridge that was completed after I became a commissioner was right east of Muskota. And I looked at it and, oh, I thought it was a fantastic bridge, and first thing I got was a complaint on it. Because with, what, I think it was a eighteen-foot deck. But by the time we put your guardrails on the side, it was sixteen and the combine couldn't get it across. Already, you know, it seemed, it looked wide enough, but you know, with the, the duels and combines now, it's not even talking about headers. We're talking about tire.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, so.
But this isn't, yeah.
The header, you got, you got all the big bricks.
Yeah, well, that, although most of those can lift up and go over.
So this is, this is what the proposal from CFS is. Uh, scope of services, hydraulic modeling of smaller low water crossing, submit to DWR and Corps permits. Revise the existing engineers' road and bridge design plans and cost estimate. The following are not included in the scope of services, bid letting and construction and. Inspection, our LMS fee for the scope of services is ten thousand dollars. Ashland County will pay for the DWR and Corps permit fees, write it as a proposal on the satisfactory date signed below. So that's as far as I went, but I wanted to to have this information available if you guys are interested.
Uh, will they update that and how good is, would that be good for, some speak, um?
Uh, would, well, the cost is gonna change.
Right.
But the permits, I believe they last longer, so I would have to talk to Kenny, but the cost, you know, and. Every day, every, you know, you, everybody understands that it's hard.
Update everything and find out where we're at.
And then we can kinda come up with a plan.
Yeah.
I mean, knowing the plan could change if we're a year.
So you want to update the existing one, or you want to?
With the revision you talked about, ask them to re-engineer it.
Okay, but that's gonna cost us.
All in.
That's gonna cost us ten thousand dollars to get that done.
Well, we got it either way, right?
Do you think it'll cost that much since they've done it?
Yeah, this is, this is, this is the new proposal. This is dated the twentieth.
This is to look at, start with what information they already have and update it to the, or to where they're scaled back.
Version.
Version of it. And would that also take, be taking the bridge out?
I don't know. I haven't talked to him about it, but the, first of all, it would be seeing what.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Sorry. Based on their proposal and scope of services. Are they utilizing? Okay, so they are utilizing the existing plan.
Yes.
So it would be, I mean, I was just wondering, should we look at any others to get a?
I just felt like, you know, that they're comfortable with it. They designed the plans before they understand.
Already got the uh. Yeah, all of the, probably hydrology, all of reports that they needed. Even, but if they scaled the scope of it back and then just go from there on.
Didn't they on number one?
Yeah, they have to do hydraulic modeling of smaller the water crossing, and they can't guarantee that it, that it would be, you know, they're trying to get. Smaller but still fits within the, the guidelines that they have to.
Oh, yeah.
The major expense in this, if you wanna know the truth, was the cement, the concrete. The concrete was a hundred and four thousand dollars.
So much with the yard on there, as you say?
Uh, nah, unit price, they've got six hundred, I don't know. I don't, you know, and I don't, that's gotta have a labor bill, you know, figured in, and probably. The reinforcing steel.
Concrete policy, hundred seventy-three a yard, it's high.
But they have, they have all the quantities, you know, everything here.
I'm wondering is this, should we reserve the option to bid the demo of the old bridge since it's separate thing? We may be able to get that done locally. Pretty reasonable compared to having them bring somebody in.
But we have a really cold winter, we could make some of it out possibly if we have time, but.
But they can line item it out like they did and with issues.
Yes, but that's, this is all they're gonna do for this cost estimate is just revise. Existing plans, but anyhow.
And just to be clear, this is required.
Yes, yes, for us, yes.
That's sometimes the perception is like, why are you gonna spend? But it's required because it's our.
Concrete in the hole.
Yes.
Well, one of, one of the landowners, you know, brought that to our attention in an email, but hey, if we did this and we work together, it'd only take so much concrete. And I wish it worked that way. But for us, it doesn't.
No.
We have to, we have to do it, and sometimes it's painstakingly and it takes time to get all your permits and get through everything, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, so in that other situation that we just determined that there was a failed structure that is not the county's responsibility. Because this structure has the amount of drainage and it lies within a township road. There's never gonna be an instance where it would be the county's responsibility, correct? Cuz I'm, I'm just asking. I just wanna clarify that.
I don't see where it would be any but, but ours, I mean.
Okay, cuz I'm just saying to your point and my point of contractors can find solutions a lot more economical sometimes. But they don't have to follow all the.
Yeah.
Engineered rules. I'm just, I just wanna be well-rounded in this discussion to know.
As long as the required opening for the water would be twenty-five square feet or higher, it's ours.
Okay.
By statute.
On a township road.
On a township.
Okay.
And the road's still open, it hasn't been vacated or.
Yeah, and what we don't wanna do is do what we think is right.
No, no, I know, a hundred percent. I just, I'm, I'm thinking of a constituents, mind, how do we get it done?
Also, to a good point you had earlier was that they, this one landowner that wrote the letter, actually, they have the uh. Easement to get to the form, the, the township road that's still open but hasn't been serviceable.
Yep.
So, I mean, they did do their work to get to, to have access to that road.
Yes.
And even though we're using this bridge. And gaining money to apply towards another bridge. As long as, my understanding is as long as we don't get any cost share money or anything else, we can do what we want to make a crossing there. But we will not be able to apply for cost share from KNOT to do that.
But we learned in working with them, that would never be successful anyway, like.
No.
Like into field interest, like they look at all the other school routes around, safety, all the things.
It would not be.
Well, and this also, we have the ninety thousand, right, that we get?
Yeah, it's going towards the other bridge.
It's looking at.
Yes.
Right, it's.
Yeah, it's going towards that bridge. It's, it's earmarked, it has to go towards that bridge. Yeah, it's going towards that bridge. It's, it's earmarked, it has to go towards that bridge. But if you.
So yeah, we have to find a solution.
So, so do you want to sign this proposal? Or are you willing to do that? Or what do you guys?
Yeah, I think, I didn't mean.
What to do, I will, I will uh.
We're gonna have the information.
Find, find the money and.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you have that in your budget for?
Well, let me, Mark and I are meeting this afternoon.
Okay.
And uh, what I would really like to do, I believe we can make this work, but I would like to meet with him and revisit this next week.
Okay.
After we've went over, at the end of the year, we're trying to make sure we're, where we need to be.
Okay.
If, if everyone's good with that.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, plus your timeframe, if you, if you wanna pull the trigger on this, it's not gonna happen tomorrow.
No, no, it's gonna take time and then we've gotta make sure that we have the.
I think that would give them at least that there is something gonna happen, you know.
Or we're trying to find a solution to, there's.
We're just not turning a blind eye to it.
And also knowing. We're gonna handle the, by case basis, because every situation is different. But at the end of the day, we want, we wanna help everyone, wanna get, get you a solution. We don't wanna just walk away and say, oh, sorry.
Well, we're a big A community, we gotta have access.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we can, if we can make this work and it takes two or three years to, to get it, get the money where we need it to, to do it. Then it does, but at least we're trying, I mean. So uh. With that being said, we have the uh. Acceptance of contract for the bulk off share on patching. Uh, those documents need to be.
There's a whole slew of documents uh to be signed by the chair, so I would like to have a motion um to allow. Myself to sign the contract documents and technical specifications for the twenty twenty-three asphalt patching program, please.
Should move.
Yeah, so moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. I will sign these, but I'm gonna take my time.
One, one copy with the bonds goes to the clerk's office.
Okay.
The other three come back. To me, I keep one, Kate keeps one and the contractor keeps one. Uh, I have a purchase order on that truck that we were having worked on. Uh, they went from seventy-five hundred to eighty-two hundred dollars on truck number ninety to Midway Ford. And.
Axle or?
No, there's a, there was a problem on the front of the engine with a pulley.
Oh, that's.
Um, so this is an amended one then.
Yeah, well, we didn't have a purchase order. I just went ahead, it was.
Oh.
Eighty dollars over my.
Yep. Okay, so I've looked for a motion to approve purchase order um to Midway Ford on behalf of Road and Bridge and the amount of eight thousand. Two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents for the front cover pulley and belt repair of the twenty fifteen Western stock.
Should move a second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Uh, last week, Alan and I met with a taxpayer on an entrance on two sixty-two. Uh. She requested, or the taxpayer requested the information that I had gotten from our. Engineering firm on site distances. And all of that information was given to her. Uh. Basically, we listened to what she had to say and informed them that uh, if they wanted to do something different, they'd have to. They'd be responsible for a. Study themselves. I just wanted to kind of.
Would send back square one to.
Yes.
Figure out with their engineer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, what will be? Accepted. Um, the reason I ask is I received a text last Tuesday evening and I was at soccer practice. I forgot. Um, until this morning, they called and requested a meeting with me tomorrow at nine AM. Uh, for my info, I was gonna see if Mr. Henderson would wanna attend uh with me. I mean, this just. Uh, being one of three commissioners, like. I can't add value to, to meetings like that. I can't add value to uh, so. Um, just wondering where we all, what, what you're in. I, I mean, we go by safety standard. We, we go by ASHTO. And yes, and, and you're not an engineer, however, engineers have given you the guidance that this is what, if there's a fatality. The county's liable based on these standards that we're try, like that we're putting in place. So it's not that we wanna. Harm anybody's economic being, it's safety, like, so, so beyond that. Um, if, if they want to move forward with their original plan, is there something we need to have them sign off on saying they'll? Take all safety, I mean, take all liability, or is, I, I, I guess. Is there a solution outside of following the ASHTO guidelines?
I can't see that. I think that. To clarify, we're, I think that if, if they wanna go have a study done. That still doesn't mean that we have to accept it, correct?
But I don't think you have to, but if they have a licensed engineer that.
If, if there's something.
In this, in that field that can. Do the study, that would be up to you guys to.
Well, the only thing that I thought of is this, what if the study would come back and say that's fine, but. That's with a fifteen mile an hour speed limit. Well, I wouldn't sign off on that because people are not gonna. You know, drive fifteen mile an hour speed limit for a mile on that.
Right.
So I mean, I don't know. Without knowing everything that, that study could say, I'm not gonna say, well. If they spend the money, that's automatically get it if they find somebody to sign off.
No, 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 that's.
I still, yeah, that's the reason I'm saying that.
That was.
It might not be the site distances that they, they might rely on the speed limit to get underneath that. And I wouldn't accept that. So I want that to be, yeah.
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 No, that was, that.
When she contacted me, I said, I mean, there's courtesy, but I said, if you talk to Joe, cause there ain't goes for Joe and. And so I got old Joe and I said, why don't you just go with me? We'll just listen. And that's, and we didn't, we didn't really offer any direction to her other than saying.
I, I told her that, I told her that I would not sign off on it myself. I didn't feel comfortable doing that.
Can you go with me tomorrow?
What time?
Nine AM.
I don't know if there's.
Okay.
If you want me to. Can you say, I honestly, I was gonna advantage to always do it, it's too many, each one of us individually and. Uh, okay, but. You know, I, I think our conversation the other day with giving her the, all the information we can direct her on.
I just have a hard time telling my constituents, you know, if they wanna meet with me, like I would be more than, I just also like to meet with um. I, I don't like to speak on behalf of any of us by myself, like that's just a practice of like whoever I meet with, I'm like, hey, will you go with me? Like I just.
Sure, I, I, I'm, that's right. I wouldn't, that was fine.
I have a meeting at ten.
Yeah.
I mean, that, but, yeah.
Uh, at their, it. Uh, no, it, or, um.
Get west.
Yeah, but.
Buy pizza, right?
Yeah, sell.
Yes, so. So, but, but I, I gave her all the information that I'd gotten from uh my contacts or our engineer.
Would close you.
Yeah. You didn't have to, hey. He said my pizza. So, but no, I didn't get, send her all the information.
I don't.
You wanna take your hat off? No, all the information from our engineer and then I talked to our engineer again.
She was gonna contact um our engineer today. Um, so. Hopefully.
Yeah, Joe provided all that information and.
Okay.
And I, and I spent quite a bit of time uh on Mr. Google with uh. Trying to find anything I could find on National Highway Traffic Safety Association, all these different sites. Anything to do with site distances and everything. And everything I found was. That actually applied to this, was at ASHTO. I, I couldn't find anything, just think about NHTSA, wherever it's mostly about. Site things like pedestrian crossings and bicycle lanes and it was, it was different, you know, and so. Um. And part of the challenge is it's really the right authority or. Because we're not a zone county, we shouldn't have these same rules. There's a lot of interesting comments made that I couldn't find anything with that at all in ASHTO.
At the end of the day, it's a safety thing there, I.
Yeah.
We, I, and I don't think you can. Correct me from wrong path. I don't think the county can let someone sign and say, I'm taking responsibility for this for, in perpetuity when. They might not, if they sell the ground and they'll be gone in two years and the driveway is still there, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I was just trying to figure out like a solution outside of, because for me, it's like you do what's right. Regardless, and when it comes to safety, there's no gray area for me, like this is the rules and this is why, and this has been proven by engineers and. And, 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 and so I don't know.
And then Pat, if you can help me here. Through the planning commission and everything, where she went through. Is whose place would it be to talk to them about entrances before everything's plotted? So that this doesn't happen to someone else again, because we're not.
Counties, the cities concerned with their territorial, territorial. Um. Subdivision regulations just have to do with the subdivision of land. The county not having any land use regulation is where this falters, where it, where it breaks down and um. We would have to have our own planning commission. We would have to have some rules. Uh, in place to have that studied before.
So with our road policy? If we pass the entrance part of that along to the city?
Or whether they consider it or not, because it's not their issue.
Well, the one thing is our planning commission, which I was on for several years, our county representatives on there. Maybe it's our job to talk to those individuals and say, advocate a little bit here for these issues.
Because I understand that the financial expense of what's been put into all this and, and I understand that it's. It's not ideal for them, but if somehow we would have the entrance thing figured out before they platted everything, then that would save. Us being in this situation again, or, and the, and the person.
The flat was done in two thousand and three, that was never filed. Had it been filed. It'd probably be. Probably stuck with it. I mean, because the rules have kinda gotten more enforced, I think.
Well. Just if they would have. You mean. If we would have accepted it, I, I, how could we accept a flat that would not uh?
Two thousand and three, ASHTO. No, obviously, two thousand and three it might have, I'm saying, that's been, that's been a long time ago now.
Or maybe somebody wouldn't have been watching it.
That's just, just some, some food for thought, something we can do that maybe help, help some of the taxpayers so we don't end up in this situation again, because it's not favorable for anybody.
Alan about that, cause uh, here, when we were talking about the same subject earlier about. Even if it happened earlier in the game, because I think the very last thing that the, after the planning commission is coming to the county. Well, if this would have. Taken place earlier in the game and then they would have been made aware of it.
Right.
Before they went through the final poop. So now it's like, okay, they've, they committed to everything up until now, well then. At the very end, they're being told, this don't work.
I feel sorry for the landowner in this case, really, because they, they don't know until now, after already spending time and money on it. So I mean, I get the argument, but. Yeah, I feel Burke would be.
But whose, whose place would it be to, to speak to him, I guess, is what I'm trying to.
I think any, to talk to about it, we don't have any. Um. There's no regulation specific that the county has. Uh, I, seems to me that the engineer who looked at this, this is something that engineer probably should have considered. But didn't because, well, I, I guess I don't know why. But there wasn't anybody that was looking over it to see whether or not it complied with.
Well, I'm sure it probably was being used as a field entrance and they felt.
Well, but. Well, I don't think that a professional organization that's laying out big plans like this would just assume something like that. I mean, I think that's a little bit, they're. Assuming a lot if that, because wherever they go, cause the ASHTO is universal throughout. The state or wherever, the, the cities, everyone, they use sightlines and distances from intersections before you can. Have a, a, an entrance, you know, and it looks like that was totally ignored when they laid this out.
Well, and maybe they weren't aware of it, I don't know.
But well, I think ASHTO would have.
And, and, and then it was brought up and it'll probably be brought up tomorrow that. Uh. I don't know what other counties do. I just know I'm trying to do the best for this county and you guys are aware that we're using ASHTO. It's nothing that I've. In the past and feel more comfortable with this than just. Put entrances in it wherever, so.
Thank you.
Uh, I hope that's it.
Mandated by statute.
What's that?
It, it, I think it may be mandated by statute.
It'd be important to know that.
Yeah.
Probably is.
Well, I know the MUTCD is, but.
And I looked in the MUTCD for side distance stuff. And her information and I. Didn't have a whole lot of luck. I'm not saying it's not in there, but that's when, when I went to the ASHTO and some of the trainings. We go through, through LTAP mentions ASHTO, so. Uh. It's not just something made by very impressive, so. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
We take a minute to talk about the. Email we got from Amberwell regarding timing.
Oh, I got it, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think they, the broker has notified them or maybe even a new, I'm not sure about that one. Um.
I have.
They have.
Yeah, in fact, they're, they're one of the.
Yeah, so they were notified.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A new one's for sure.
Okay, good. Um. Well, they were asking what's November fifth or something like that.
So I just responded to him with Pat on it, just stating we had set the cutoff for October thirty-first at noon. And I hope that helped him with his timeline of. I mean, I don't know.
I think they have to set up, what I heard was they gotta set meetings up with different board and they, this is a matter. Getting out of information and getting the right people, the right meetings and time to do their. Their, their due diligence, which, you know, we're gonna talk in five days, so it's not like it's a month or two. But.
I haven't had time to call Dick. Uh, catch a bandow. Since that email came.
Okay.
To find out if. If they have feedback on.
Okay.
What that extension, if anything, would do.
I just thought it was kind of a quick timeline anyway, but. And what are your thoughts?
Okay, so I have thoughts that getting the most um amount. People involved to give us um proposals is a positive. Um. I guess I would seek that from perception of last week, we said October thirty-first at noon. So like my response to him was basically like, this is what we decided as a commission. Um, if we are going to alter from that. To allow another proposal to be present. I don't think there's any harm in that as long as we are discussing that a potential. Person interested wants to be included, however, this is their timeline, so that everybody has that equal opportunity for the same timeline. Um. Just communication, right?
Right.
It's like transparency communication, like if we're gonna, because at the end of the day, we wanna find our best fit, fit for our. Facility. So you don't wanna. Leave anyone out. There's no harm. They're all sealed bids. You're just extending a date. However, I don't know, I'm just saying all these things that come to my head, cause I wanna do things right by all.
Well, my question's more about, and then not pointing fingers, but did the broker, cause I thought we directly did to contact everyone. Before, or are we supposed to do that? Cause it sounds like Amberwell was in contact.
Well, and so that was one of the things we had asked Pat of, cause there were thirty people they reached out to and my question was, was a new and Amberwell part of that? Because we know that they both had interests. We just wanna make sure everybody with interest was included, right? And unless you're following along on our county commission meetings, which most people aren't watching, you know, we're not out soliciting individuals. We use the broker.
Well, and then the, I sent him an email about that and then he called a couple days later and. Had been contacted by Amberwell and I suspect that was because of some contact that.
Yeah. He, I said, are you guys gonna do anything? And they were totally caught off guard, so that's when he, they talked to Jeff, so that's what started all this, cause it's like. They didn't know, you know, so to me.
Okay.
They should be contacted at the beginning like everybody else. That seems awkward.
I would agree with that and I mean, local, all the things of, of, I mean, they, we wanna give everyone the same opportunity.
Yeah, so. And then he decided not to even do it. I mean, they gotta look it over. I mean, that's all of the question, but at least they have the chance to look at it. Yeah.
Uh. I'm just torn both ways, right? Because it's like. I, I know like when you have a deadline that you set, like you'll do everything possible to hit it. Um, but also like, at the end of the day, finding the best solution for the facility is, is the top priority, so um. I'm looking forward to hearing you, your perception, Eric.
I don't know, I'm I'm torn too, I mean, I. I didn't get out of the email that they hadn't been connect contacted.
I know that's true. Yeah, they didn't know until I asked a question to one of the trustees, they were like, what? So. And that was.
We also don't meet, you know, if the deadline is the thirty first, we don't meet the seventh. So our next meeting would be the fourteenth.
So we would have any action anywhere.
Thirteen, sir. It's the Monday.
That's the Monday, because we canvass.
Oh, that's fine.
Need to make sure.
I can make sure we count it that way.
Yeah.
That's what you guys agreed on at the organization meeting in January.
So November the thirteen, I will be on ten. I'm in Chicago.
I need to change the meeting on the fourteenth, the thirteen, because I still have it in the fourteen. Okay. Can we canvass without?
You can, you have a forum.
I was like adding to friend.
Yeah, you would have a forum without them.
And the canvas is based on date deadlines for the clerk, like.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so there's no option. Without a publication, so the thirteen would be, we don't have to spend more money. Okay, to have a publication where all we have to do is just, okay, post that your meeting has changed.
If that's the canvas, so it'll likely is gonna be November twenty first before really gonna look at all these proposals, as far as.
Okay, so could we have, I'm just asking, um, could we have the cutoff be on Monday of the thirteenth? I I like the fact of it was gonna be at noon on the thirty first, so then we could know together.
Yeah.
How many proposals we got, and then how many we would have to review. Then we can know that on the thirteenth and then come back on the twenty first as a group and like kind of go through them together and, I don't know.
Wasn't there kind of? A push that we have these, I mean. So we're not leaving the the bidders strong or hanging out there, it's my push.
Yeah.
No skill, so weren't weren't we advised to be kind of keep it as current as we could?
Good point, we were.
But that's the broker pushing it, the broker gets commissioned, so maybe there's, you know, I'm just saying, there's a certain amount.
Well, but you know, we're we're not dealing. Some of these are large organizations and and I I would. I would probably, if if we could extend it to the fifth and consider it on the seventh.
We don't meet that week because of the election.
Oh, that's, I forgot about the. If you could make the deadline to six or seven.
Didn't they ask for the third?
So my question is then, next week, if somebody asks for the ten. And I'm just asking, because this is how we have to think about things of like.
Fair, that's why I'm worried, she's just saying, whatever, November seventh and be done with it and. That's one week.
My guts kind of telling me to stick with our original cutoff now, because I'm thinking. These are those decisions that.
Well, I think, because certainly I've got the broker, not someone filled to contact him. Well, I just don't know.
There's not direction.
We told them we'd be sure in contact and well and it. That's my understanding.
I think there, we gave them a list of people that have been interested in.
Oh, we did give them that list, okay, perfect.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Pat, what do you think?
Well, I I don't. I haven't talked to Nick, I I don't know what his. What their thoughts are, but extending it from the thirty first to the third doesn't seem. Yeah, I mean, it seems unlikely to me that that's gonna. Turn the world into a tailspin.
As long as everyone knows that's on the list or, yeah.
Yeah.
Communication is given to everybody that.
And I think they could go back to the the proposals that they received and tell them. We don't really like to drag our feet, but we're doing it because local foundation has brought them late and they're. That's what they've asked for, and I.
I think it's, I think it's reasonable.
Okay. What do you think, Eric?
I agree.
You agree with that? Okay, so I've looked for a motion to extend um the proposals from Senior Village from October thirty first at noon. Uh, to November third. The five o'clock.
Business, yeah.
Close the business.
So. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. So the broker's the only one. That would need to be notified of that, we're not pub like publishing anything on behalf of the county, it's all fun.
They would extend that message out to everyone.
Okay, alright.
I would probably answer Amberwell directly somehow through some channel.
I'm gonna, Pat, I'm gonna respond, because since I responded.
Okay.
I'm gonna re-respond after today that we extended it, so I'm just gonna keep you CC'd in, Pat. You good with that? Okay.
I I just want to make sure that, you know, since that was the the glitch was there that we. Double hit that.
Perfect, alright, we have four minutes till our next item.
Ran outside yet?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, before you go into that executive session, I. Gonna suggest that maybe, I I don't think you need to have separate executive session that we can run. Extended one and bring people in and out as you desire, but I would like to talk with you for. And maybe ten or fifteen minutes at the beginning about process. And then likely at the end as well.
So, uh, when I make the motion, then how would I make that with, do we name everybody that's gonna be in and out?
I don't think you're required to do that, I think, uh. I don't think you're required to list everyone that could possibly be considered. Um, or that could possibly come in to talk to you.
Okay, I'll list the constants and then just say, and personnel, various personnel.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's not a requirement in the statute, to list the people that would be present.
So during our initial, do you want some time with us before we have anyone here near?
Yes.
So why, why would we do this one different than what we have been doing? I'm just asking. Because usually when.
We don't have, I I would like to talk about that in executive.
Oh, perfect, okay, thank you, okay, so we'll do attorney client first.
Well.
Personal.
If you wanted to have a ten or fifteen minute attorney client before you have the executive test, then we can sure, we can sure do that.
You'd rather go with a ten minute attorney client or just do do a.
Well, it's kind of hybrid, because I mean, it's both, it's attorney client about personnel matters.
Why don't we just go with the personal uh personnel and then.
Get the.
And that way, we don't have to have go through so many different sets of. It would simplify things as far as the minutes. Okay, and are we ready for that?
Uh, yep.
So the the total duration that we would need to. Forty, so it would end at twelve. Is that correct?
Yeah, you said one hour.
Okay. Well, yeah.
No. It's an hour twenty.
What do you mean, there's fifteen, well, yeah.
And then an hour fifteen or twenty.
Twenty.
An hour forty if we need ten at the beginning and ten at the end.
For twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty. Hey, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session. At eleven AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of this closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session at twelve thirty PM. In the uh commission room courthouse basement, and those present will be uh the three commissioners, Pat Henderson. Jody. Uh, HR and varying um personnel.
So twelve forty.
Twelve forty?
Yeah.
Well, then that's twelve forty.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
Okay. Uh, since we're back, I'll make a motion that we continue our uh executive session with the same characters involved. For another fifteen minutes.
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
I send what you said?
That's what I said. Basically.
Do we need to see that, or are you good?
Well.
Do you want to see the wording before sense?
That's okay.
Okay. Yeah, you want it?
Yeah, it is a nice.
How long did you need?
Fifteen, I mean, that's, I think.
Oh, another one?
Attorney client, uh, finance director. Counselor, senior village administrator, commissioners.
Can we do Jody as well?
And HR.
Please, thank you.
Say attorney client, yes. Ready?
Does Julie know that yet?
She does.
Okay, what time is it?
Twelve fifty six.
I will, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at twelve fifty six. Uh, PM for consultation with an attorney for a public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by. K S seventy six, K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion until the board come out of executive session and. How long did we say, fifteen minutes?
Sure.
Uh, in the commission room courthouse basement, and those present will be. The three commissioners, Pat Henderson, Jody Moore, uh. Senior real village admin and. Finance director.
Say.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
And it's under one?
Uh, not a lot. Sir, yes.
I would move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at one eleven. Uh, PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes. In the commission room courthouse basement, and those present will be um the three commissioners, Pat Henderson, Jody Moore.
Sorry about that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Alright, so let me find the info really quick, I just filed it under solid waste. Okay, um, alright, so since Veterans Day uh falls on a Friday this year. Our solid waste will be um open on Friday and closed on Saturday. So, um, just so everyone is aware of that.
Veterans Day falls on a Saturday, but the county has observed it for the Friday, that is when we deemed it a holiday.
Oh, sorry, I was just reading her email.
Yeah.
So, thank you. I didn't look at the calendar, I was just rereading what she sent.
So November eleventh is Saturday.
Got it. Okay, so November eleventh, we are closed, November tenth, we are open. Okay.
Only for.
Solid waste.
Yep. Alright, perfect. Um, unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business today?
Yes, okay, not me.
Okay.
Joe is here.
That's, yeah.
Our safety meeting, those are the uh. Results from carrot on our uh losses and by department, so that's something that. Um, I said it was interesting, I don't remember seeing that report, or at least bringing it on.
It's always shared with our safety committee that is direct report with carrot, and that deals with all the incidents, accidents, so it's never. Actually shared amongst the. Commission, but if you guys would like, I can always board.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I I just think it's interesting to see that, and I've asked her to provide it.
Awesome, thank you. We'll be here.
Are you guys needing anything, let me think.
I don't think so.
I don't see anything. Thank you.
You can come so close as it needs, you like.
Thank you. On the back.
Oh, no, that's.
I need a shrink. That's not news.
Yeah, come on in.
Before you make that phone call or visit today.
Yeah.
We need to let it suck.
Alright.
Okay, uh, I believe that is ours.
Okay.
But I don't believe, I don't know what the roads deal is, but I believe that is ours.
Okay.
And I'm over here trying to get that. Taken care of now.
Okay.
So.
Cool.
We want to just deal with that next weekend?
Yeah, but I just wanted to let you know before you talk to him.
Yeah.
We're gonna try to get this sorted out, so that we know, and if it is ours, the roads is still in question, so I don't know how that.
Okay.
How that, but I've been working this afternoon and finally got ahold of somebody and. Uh, I think that it's ours, so.
On another thing I wanted to mention, because I thought it was interesting, thank you for sending us the Ottawa Road Traffic Studies. Because that number of two sixty two to two thirty, daily traffic, three hundred and sixty three vehicles a day. Like, that's pretty, and that wasn't even during harvest, right?
Part of harvest, so what we did, we left it out way too long, because it takes, it goes like in fifteen minute segments, you had a really. It was a lot, so we'll just do a week at a time, is what we're gonna try to do.
I just thought that was interesting.
We have that out, and we have Osborne south of that. Uh, we're gonna.
Thank you.
We're gonna try to do more of that as we can.
I think that that traffic count and that's, you you have the uh thing across the.
Yes, yeah. Yes, yes. We have three, so.
Oh, okay. Uh but anytime that we've got a road that's in question and we're gonna apply for any grants or anything, I think more of that information that we can add.
It's awesome.
Yeah, that's a lot of traffic.
Yeah, but thank you for that.
Well, you're welcome. Emily's a big part of that. She's one that does all the counting. She has to bring it in, hook into the computer and. And uh separate today's everything, but thank you all for word that to her.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, have a good day.
Thank you. Thanks, you too. Um I have a letter of support um for project concern. And uh it just states that the Acheson County Board of Commissioners fully support the application of project concern to the Kansas Department of Transportation. For operating expenses to help support the transportation program in the city and county of Acheson. And that gives information about it, um and that Acheson County fully supports project concern every year and appropriates the sum of a hundred and twenty five thousand. Um do I have a motion to allow the chair to sign this letter?
So move.
So.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Alright, uh next county counselor updates.
I don't have anything today.
Okay, any other executive sessions? Um did you guys have a chance to approve?
Yes.
Okay, um I look for a motion to, what are you sending that over there with this? Uh look for a motion to approve the expenses for this week.
So move. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Public comment. I'm seeing none. Nobody's typing. Um I look for a motion to which?
I move to your second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero, one thirty two.